Cell phones off, we'll start with the.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we'll start with the approval of the agenda. And I think we gotta go over the number nine personnel, cause some of these coaches were approved in May, correct?
Tim, you wanna grab me one too?
Yes, that's your rule.
Thank you.
So I think in May, we approved Justin Stevens, Neil Bucknell, Taylor Meyer, Frankie, Lindsay. And that's it, those five, is, am I correct, is anyone?
Lindsay was for the boys.
Lindsay flipped that out, yeah.
Lindsay flipped to girls.
Yes.
Oh, so we have to redo Lindsay's.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, we take four off, Justin Stevens, Neil Bucknell, Taylor Meyer, and Frankie.
What about the personnel discussion on business manager contracts, that should be removed as well?
That's also removed, yes, because that contract was approved last year.
Oh, okay, so the only discussion on that was, is there was a change in the benefits?
Yeah, except for the benefits.
And so that was the only reason?
At the office staff rate?
Yep. So it really, there's nothing to prove, it's just, it's just gonna be a mention, really?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the deletions of the personnel items we mentioned.
Motion by Angie.
Second.
Second by Teresa, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next way of public input, has anybody signed?
I don't have a sheet here.
Oh. Well, if there was no sheet, that's okay, is there anybody here that would like to have some public input? You're welcome to stand up if you do. Okay, so then we'll move on to recognition, to start with, there was a bus that was chartered for the girls volleyball team. And donating towards that bus was Tim Lewis and Kyle Stern, Dan Evans, and the First State Bank, so we'd like to thank them for that. What, which game did they go to?
Blooming.
Blooming, yeah. Playoff game.
Yep.
So also on recognition, I think there's some football awards.
Sheet? Upstairs on that?
Yeah, right here, I'll let you.
Yeah, yes, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, our team was district nine champions. Chase Johnson was offensive player of the year. Tanner Casel was district lineman of the year. And Trevor Carrier was district coach of the year. And our record was, it's either eight and one or nine and one.
Nine.
And by the way, so that everyone knows, we complied with Title IX, we provided a bus for the trip to where the heck were we, way out in the middle of nowhere where I grew up.
Fall down.
Fall down.
And I'd also like to point out, when they picked these, like Chase and Tanner were district offensive player, district lineman, and Trevor was district coach. Those were picked from other schools, the other schools voted on that, not our own school. So just to be aware of that. Also, the volleyball had awards banquets, is there anything on that?
Sam was all-conference honorable mention, Sam Bulkirk.
Okay.
As far as conference goes, yeah?
Yep.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, I apologize, I didn't make it to a volleyball match. But I've, in the future, if I'm here next year, I'm gonna vow to make it to some of those also, not just to go to the boys' football meetings.
What was the volleyball record for the year?
Seven and...
She said it just the other night.
Yeah, seven and sixteen, I think.
With much improvement throughout the year, and they played their best game at the playoff game, and it was pretty good.
That's what I heard, heard it was very good.
Good.
Anything else, anyone need to bring up?
Oh, we got the bleachers over around the ball field now. Nathan was on a government site in Red Wing, City of Red Wing.
City of Red Wing was selling them, yep.
They had bleachers for sale. So he, he did that. A few weeks ago, I don't even remember, I guess.
Maybe a couple weeks ago, they got, got put in.
Yeah, so, I think that was a huge, huge money saver, and they're very nice, they got hitches on them, wheels, so we can move them. So, it was a good deal.
If anyone knows it's around the ball diamond out there, so, I think, Nathan got them purchased pretty reasonable, too.
It was less than fifteen hundred dollars, and then he had his, a trucking company that was work for him at work, actually voluntarily, free of charge, trucked them down for us.
Good.
So.
So I guess we need to thank Nathan for the initiative of doing that, and the volunteers that helped set them and distribute the rock.
Yep, it was Junkie Trucking that did the trucking.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we purchased them, it would be in excess of twelve thousand dollars to, I don't know if it's running here. It'd be over, over twelve thousand to fourteen thousand dollars to purchase them and bring them in, and it could be even much more. So it was a tremendous saving for the district, does that work at all?
We also had the FFA boys go to nationals as well, I can't remember what places they were, but...
Eleventh.
Eleven.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the forty-five teams.
Yep, forty-five states showed up, we placed eleventh, so.
And what were some of the individuals, I know, I know, Kendrick had a...
Yeah, no, I forget, Kendrick was fourteenth, seventeenth, somewhere in there. Carter was thirty-fifth.
Carter Harrington.
Yep, and, I don't know, Kendrick, Kendrick was in, I forget.
I'm looking, I'm trying.
I think.
I know, Grant, Grant was the, yes, Grant was the first place, Carter was second.
Grant, it says Grant seventeenth, Carter thirty-fifth, Kendrick forty-first, Nathan one twenty-three.
Forty-first, yep. Yep, yep.
There you go.
Yeah, so it was, it was good. A lot of hands-on, Caterpillar brought all new machines in, and they got quizzed on that, pretty, pretty good. Yeah, it was just a lot of hands-on welding. We actually brought back, since we placed in the top fifteen, we brought back a welder that they gave the team, so that's down in the FFA room for Ms. Tim. So yeah, it was, it was good, good eye-opener, good experience.
Tim, what did it say, fifty teams?
Forty-five teams, I think there was a hundred and eighty, something like that, yeah, kids, so, yeah, we did good.
One thing, I'll also point out, is Kendrick aced a fifty question.
He did.
Oral exam, a written exam?
Written exam, he did, he got fifty out of fifty, we were, everybody was very shocked, so. So yeah, yeah, it was, it was really neat to see, see the kids go to work, so.
And if I could to relate to that, there was an outbreak of, or person that was, had mumps there.
Yeah.
So we returned, I think Axel put it in the paper, too, we sent out, or released to everybody, to please be aware that the mumps was there, especially those students who'd have not been, had their, what is it, MMRs?
MMR, yeah.
Exactly, so we wanted that notice out to everyone in the school.
Yep.
So is there anything else, anyone like to bring up for recognition? I guess if not, then we'll move on to number six, approval of the minutes. And I think we got some mistakes that we might have to just redo the minutes, I think.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to redo the minutes, reviewing my notes, there's a couple things that are missing, so I'd like to table those to get the corrections made for next month before we go ahead and approve them.
I think it was just a matter, there was some confusion on note-taking and...
Correct, yep.
And so, Dylan, you do have last month's meeting recorded, correct? So I, I think you'll have to get together with Ray or Teresa or whoever.
Yep, to review the tape, yep.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I also have notes that might be helpful, too, that I take in the meetings.
Okay.
So I'll see if I have notes regarding the vote, motions, et cetera.
You have yours, too?
All right, quick question, with all the new personnel here, whose responsibility is it to do the notes?
I'm...
And who's the board secretary?
Clerk? Clerk, it's me.
You.
Clerk.
And clerk, and then I can have my secretary also take notes?
I think the confusion was, is that, that I think you thought Mel was doing it, and Mel thought you were doing it.
Right.
And that's where the confusion got.
And she took the notes, she took notes.
Okay.
And then I transcribed them, based on what I could decipher.
And then if I could, Mr. Chair, I've always taken notes, too, so we have a backup, I mean, I can sit down if there's any questions and compare mine to theirs, 'cause I have notes going back to the September meeting.
I guess my only question would be then, if, if you're normally the one that's gonna be doing the notes, the reviewing of the tape, why would that not be done by the person who's normally gonna be doing the notes?
Oh, that's fine, whoever.
I mean, it's, I'd just ask him.
Sure.
That's all, I mean, just, just so there's consistency.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, we'll have to set up a process to do that.
I guess I'll make a motion to table the October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting minutes, until we get the corrections made.
Okay, motion by Tim to table the minutes.
Second.
Second by Teresa, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next we move on to the treasurer's report, and, so I guess we'll turn that over.
Kelly.
Kelly.
We got it on paper?
There's a couple that are, are they all in here, or some of them?
Yep, the minutes that, or the report that was posted online is different than what we usually have, so I met with Crystal this morning to go through the bills, and I had her print off what we normally do that has everything on it. So you guys do have paper copies of everything that went out this month?
Well, honestly, I don't really know what this report is.
Which one?
Okay, so, Crystal's been doing the bill phase, okay, so you're gonna do some of the report ones.
So this report is...
We don't have it.
Which one?
He doesn't have the new one.
He doesn't have the new one that we printed out.
Yep, I need another copy, hand in mine.
But, basically, we'll just, we just look through, and, and, any questions, people just, or members or whoever, just ask whatever it is that it's for.
No, I did not have this one.
And Crystal probably knows more, 'cause Crystal, she actually details, right?
Yep, yeah, this one has got, yeah, a lot more detail, yep.
Yep, so going forward, we'll go back to this one.
Yeah, we'll go back to this one.
So, do I normally go over what?
I think it's just...
Normally, you just ask.
If anybody has any questions, yep.
Normally, I'll have them up on the screen, and then we would just go through them, if anybody had a question, or you could explain something.
If something's not, like, a normal thing, like, you might just touch on, say, hey, this is something that we don't...
For the most part, for the most part, a lot of these bills are...
Right, yeah, I had, I had a few questions, but... This one, this one, for thirty-nine thousand.
You know, like, right, we got a bill for DSN Scores.
The Disney trip.
So one question I got is, is most of the gray coal fuel base was...
That's the line heater, to be in the lines of the...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay, so they bought a new one, I guess that was...
Yeah, the old one went, I tried, I tried to fix it, yeah, it was...
And, Mr. Chair, I apologize, but we're just getting people in place, and then in fact, our business manager was at a training today, I don't like the way that this turned out, I'd like things to be much better organized, and it will be in the future. And generally, my treasurer reviewed the bills in the other districts, and if there are questions, she would bring it up there, about the bills, or any questions going over to her. So this will not happen again.
Well, I, I think we're okay, we understand, it's gonna take a time, and, you know, so, and you get a few months under your belt, and I think it'll be soon.
So, I guess the one question I have is, is this gonna be available to the board, you know, we were accustomed to having information provided before the meetings.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Is that gonna be a practice?
Yes, and I have noticed, because we're new people in place, that it will be, as done previously, hopefully several days or a week prior to the next one.
We'd like to have at least the weekend, before the weekend, or the, yeah, I was still trying to figure out what the reports were, let alone run them. Well, I just asked a question, because I don't wanna assume that that's the case, and we're here a month from now, and everybody's confused again.
That won't happen again.
No, so what... Correct, they weren't exactly explained to what had to be posted, so I'll go in, in the next week or so, and sit down with Kelly and Crystal, and say, you know, this is what we have every month, that, you know, we post back the original way, so that way, by December, we should have less hiccups.
There is a being registered posted, it's just not this one.
It's a different version.
So, but this is the one that will be posted, and it was a mistake in our report.
Right.
Yep.
No, I'm just asking for discussion on how, and what kind of information, and when.
That's valid, and we'll be sure to conform to what's done previously.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be what we did previously, just we agree that what we're gonna do gets done.
L and M boiler, so, is that bill for, for just getting the boilers up and running again, or is that the installation of that, of that test equipment that you talked about, right?
No, no, this is not to my dollars, a test equipment, that's... We have it, yeah, we have it now, I'll talk about that in my report.
Okay.
Then, I don't believe that's been installed yet, no. And I'll explain to the board what that is, and when it'll be installed, so this is not that. This was the pre-dis事that was done, just prior to her, when I became superintendent.
Oh, okay. How many students are going on the Disney trip to, I guess, Florida, right?
Didn't, didn't I get any idea? I don't know if they know yet, Mr. Chair, I think they're still...
I don't have a number.
They're still registered.
Is that for band and choir?
Yep.
So anyway, yeah, there's thirty-nine thousand checks sent for that, so, I hope that's a few.
Yeah, it's like a ninety-ninety price per person, and then all of their fundraising money will go back in that account.
Well, if anyone has any questions, otherwise, we'll move on to other reports. Do you have a treasurer's report or a monthly budget summary with the... You do what you're...
It's not...
You're saying?
Yeah. I didn't get the reconciliation done, so, it's not completely accurate.
Region five, how many times have they been here to help so far?
Once, and I'm going there Thursday.
Okay. So...
I've talked to him on the phone quite a few times, you know, when I have questions with him, I know what to ask. I don't know what I don't know, so.
Well, we'll forego the other ones for this month, and, work towards having things next month, and see how it goes out.
I'll work with Teresa and figure out what I need.
So are we gonna have two months' worth of information next month, or just more?
Well, I guess, do you need two months, because every month is just updated to where it's current, so, do you want it current this month, and then want it updated again for December, if you want it that way?
I don't know if it's necessarily what I, what I want, it's what are we required to do, first of all? Do we need a little budget call on the basis of that?
Just a matter of what you want.
I don't know, I'm just asking a question, so, it'd be nice to help.
Can I comment, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Mr. Kennedy, I'd like an update on both months, so that the board can be satisfied, so I feel better that way, too.
Without a cap?
Exactly, so I'd like, I'd like the report that should have been given this month, and then the report next month, which should be built on that, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, so...
Yeah, that's, I definitely, that's...
That's what I would refer to.
Any more discussion?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the monthly bills on the treasurer's report.
Motion by Tim?
Second.
Second by Pat, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Oh, okay, so basically, we just did the seven and eight both then.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next we got personnel, we'll start with the approval of Tracy Big Elk, is that how you pronounce that? As janitor, at a rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents an hour.
I'll make the motion to approve Tracy Big Elk, Big Elk as janitor at the fourteen seventy-six per hour.
Okay, motion by Cassidy?
Second.
Second by Justin, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next, we got Adam Kinnick's, junior high boys' basketball coach. So it'll be seven weeks of coaching, and he'll be paid a total sum of one thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Any discussion?
Yeah, when, is he available, what, December? Is it January?
December, January, he can start.
Okay.
I think he's available in December, but like, over break when there's been practice.
Sure. Okay.
Chair, he's fulfilling responsibilities with another district, correct, Mr.?
He's finishing up college.
College.
He'll be doing a student teaching in Osage during that time, so he'll be in the area. My understanding is Sean is gonna help out volunteer with that junior high until Adam is available, is that's my understanding?
I'll make the, go ahead. I'll make the motion to approve Adam Kinnick's at a price of one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight seventy-five for seven weeks of coaching junior high boys' basketball.
Okay, motion by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Pat, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next we got approval of Trevor Carrier, head coach, girls' basketball. His pay will be a total of four thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Make a motion to approve Trevor as the head coach for girls' basketball.
Motion by Tim?
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Want to press? Okay, so you got six, four, and one against, is that right?
Yep.
Motion carried. Next we got approval of Lindsay Melks, junior high coach, girls' basketball, and her rate of pay will be a total sum of two thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Lindsay.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Angie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstain, motion carries.
Yes, thank you.
Next we got approval of Kelly Masters for a volunteer coach for girls' basketball.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Kelly as a volunteer coach.
Motion by Angie?
Second.
Second by Pat, and I'd just like to add, as volunteer, his payment is zero. Any discussion?
He takes smiles, right?
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Next we got, I'm sorry, okay, next we got personnel, discussion on superintendent contract.
You want me to stay, Chair, or you want me to go outside here?
No, you can stay. Pat and I, Pat and I met with Ray here, what, a week or so ago, Pat, I suppose?
Yeah.
And Ray expressed his interest in becoming our long-term superintendent, and I think he would be interested in a two- or three-year deal, right, three-year deal? And so, we made the recommendation to Ray that we bring it to the board for discussion, and if the board is interested, we would make a motion to enter into negotiation with Ray, for that, for that purpose. So, I guess it's open for discussion, now, one thing I did present to Ray as, as an option, and something for the rest of the board to consider, and I never, I don't think I shared this with you even, Pat, 'cause I just kinda mentioned it to Ray the other day. Is I just asked if he'd be interested in a point six instead of a point five, 'cause he's here, I think you've been here three days every week, since you've been here, ready, how many?
Can I comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
When I was in Butterfield Road, and I was three days, two days, point five, I asked them for point six, they weren't that interested, when I left, I hired a new superintendent at point six. And gave them a four oh three B. I paid him about fourteen, fifteen thousand more than he. More than that, twenty thousand more than he.
But we don't need to make any decisions on any of this, the only thing that, that we need to decide on tonight is, do we enter, if the board is interested in entering into negotiation with Ray? And then we could explore the... And then we could explore the possibility of a point-five or a point-six, and, and we could maybe even bring a couple of different options back to the board for further discussion in a month or two, so.
I guess my question is, if we recall, four to five months ago, when we went through this before we had Steve Salee, for the time we did, when we were looking for an interim superintendent, the discussion at the time, as I recall, was, let's find an interim until we can find a long-term superintendent, and as a part of that discussion, it seemed to me, from the information that we were given, that the best time to look for a replacement superintendent is at the end of the calendar year. That's when they're available, which would be, you know, probably should have started if they were gonna post this position a while back, through the end of the year. Now, am I recalling that incorrectly?
Uh, no, our, our intention is to find a long-term superintendent.
Right.
But what Ray is doing is offering to fill the position if we would decide.
Sure, no, and I understand that, and I.
And so, we, you know, we, we have a choice to make, do we want Ray, and if we do, we can enter negotiations and, and, and make an agreement, and if we don't, then I guess we can move forward and post it.
Seems to me we have seven months to decide that, we don't need to do it anytime soon, because he's contracted through June, right?
If you were gonna post it, wouldn't you wanna post it, you know, within the next few months or a couple of months at least?
Weeks, I mean, they're available, you know, superintendents, the majority of them are available, and looking for positions, no. I mean, that's what was provided as information through all the discussions that we had, when we were looking for an interim. So I guess my question is, what risk is there for us posting the position to see, I guess my concern is, how do we decide if we want Ray or not, if we have nothing to compare to?
I think we've got a lot in the past to compare to. So for you to ask that question, have you been under a rock for the last four years?
Tim, I'm asking, what harm?
I know what you're asking.
What am I asking?
Stirring the barrel again.
What do you mean stirring the barrel?
Move on, let's go.
What harm is there in posting the position?
Nothing, what harm is there in liking Ray and wanting him to stay here?
Can I speak?
Absolutely, I've been waiting.
No, you haven't, you keep interrupting.
All right, go ahead.
Can I speak?
Yes.
What harm is there in posting the position to see what kind of candidates are available? If we don't like, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna insist that I'm gonna dislike Ray no matter what, then it's a five-one, it's a six-one goal, but you have an informed decision, and you've looked at any candidates that might wanna work as a superintendent. Now, I ask that for two questions, number one, what's the harm, and number two, if we're looking for a long-term superintendent, um, there, I mean, there are other reasons to look at it.
Yep, there probably is some reason.
I'm just asking, I mean, I'm not stirring a pot, I'm asking a good question, and if you don't answer a good question, that's, that's fine. But I, if somebody could give me an answer is, what's the harm in looking at candidates, what's the harm in looking at candidates?
There is no harm. But, but if, but if, if you look at what we've had, since I've been on the board,
Yeah.
and the situations we've been in, and the money we've wasted, and the time we've wasted, we're going in a great direction right now.
That's.
So you're gonna flip a, flip a coin to say, well, hmm, things aren't so rosy, so let's flip the coin.
We don't have to hire anybody that we.
Okay.
But why, why, I, I don't understand, we, we have somebody that's doing good things in a posi, the school's in a most positive form it's been in in years, and now you're questioning.
It's, that's, I mean, that is an opinion that you have.
That's right, so I'm asking.
It's an opinion that a lot of us have.
Yeah, the majority, the silent minority, well, I shouldn't say silent minority.
That's a very good characterization, that's an extremely good characterization.
But they're not silent.
And I can't, all I'm gonna say is.
I just got one question, now the people.
If you don't want to, then don't.
The people sitting here observing, would you object to us giving Ray a three-year contract?
We'll give it to him.
Give it to him.
Sign it, hook it out.
Very happy.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's, what's your view of the rest of the staff and the rest of the school, what's your view?
Why would we wanna interject the possibility of taking a positive influence of the school?
Yes.
Our view.
I feel the same.
We start the interview process, I understand, well, there's no harm in starting the process, but the possible harm is Ray needs.
I got two boys, I got two boys in the school that both say they've seen this superintendent more.
But some people aren't the positive going.
That's, that's the problem, is there's still that, that possibility of, if people are out seeing the school crumble, they're moving positive.
That's right.
If you, I, I would be not doing my job if I didn't ask the question.
Can I, can I comment? When I spoke with Steve Salee, he indicated that I should request a long-term contract with the board in November of this year. If you open it up, I have other options too, and I may start looking around, and I could take a full-time position at more than double what you're gonna pay me. And I was a semi-finalist for Minneapolis Schools, and a semi-finalist for Shakopee the last two years, so that's my comment, so if you open it up, then I'm gonna open up my file.
Yep.
Ray, that's the one. Well, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make one comment.
And I, I told you that in the previous meeting.
Yes, you did, and I called the two people, and you told me that you had told you that, and they did not, they did not agree that that's what they told you.
That's what they did.
Let's have a conversation, what people told people, Justin, we can start that conversation.
All right, so.
I asked the question, you can move on, that's fine.
Let's move on, it's, and you're right, Justin, we could post it, um, but the question that I'm presenting to the board is, do we want Ray? Are we interested in, in working out an agreement with Ray, or not, because if we want Ray, then there's no need to post it.
Yeah, and that's fine, I will vote for Ray if that's what the board wants.
So that's really the question.
I just asked the question.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to make a motion that the board enter negotiation contracts to do a contract with Superintendent Ray Arsenal for a long-term for a three-year deal.
Uh, motion by Teresa.
I second.
I heard Cassidy first, so. Uh, second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we got, um.
Comment, please, thank you, board, thank you publicly.
Thank you.
We'll, uh, let Pat and I know when you wanna leave.
Whatever you want.
Steve, are we done?
When we get done.
When you're done harvesting and selling your props.
That could be next spring.
Whenever the board's representatives wish, I'll make myself available.
Okay, sounds good. Next, we're gonna have a short discussion on the business manager contract. Last month, uh, we approved Kelly Masters for a salary of sixty thousand for a year, uh, plus benefits. After the meeting, we had a discussion on benefits, and, uh, I think it was mentioned at the meeting that the benefits package would be thirty-seven thousand, and so that's the incorrect. Uh, Kelly's benefit package is gonna resemble more of the support staff benefit package, which, we do have those numbers, but, or, maybe Crystal does, but I think it's more in the mid-teens.
Yeah, I think it's about sixteen, eighteen thousand.
So, and we just wanted to bring that mention, because people have asked, and so, we just wanted to bring that mention that.
But that, you said that was already part of what he signed before he started, that, that change in the benefit.
The change is in the contract, the change was in the contract.
Okay, that's what I thought he meant.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, I felt that the thirty-seven thousand was excessive, and that, uh, not that he's not worth it, but I felt that for the good order of the office, we should keep it in a range closer to the manager of the office staff. And my package is a small fraction of that I might add too, because I have no medical, I have no retirement, I'm about, probably about, what, six, eight thousand if that, my package.
So is this the correct contract?
And I might also add, he's volunteering coaching basketball, which is saving the district another several thousand dollars.
Because according to this, um, my benefits are paid at the school expense, unless on that sign.
Yeah, it doesn't really list it out on there. The benefits aren't really listed out, it talks about insurance, and it doesn't really.
So what are our options at this time, we need an exact amount for the board to approve it?
It's approved already.
It's approved?
Yeah.
Well, based on our conversation, it's gonna be at the amount that we had discussed, right? You mentioned. Well. It's, is that the same as your, and your rate is?
I, I believe it's seven two.
That's, and that's what I showed you when we came in and looked at it, so that's what.
No, contracts.
No, but the contract don't really state it, so we, we need to put that in there, it needs to get put in there.
Yeah.
So there will be healthcare about that.
That's quite a difference in pay.
It's like twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But I had mentioned, it wouldn't be that high.
But it wasn't in the contract that I signed, there was nothing stated in that contract, it says that it'll be paid at the school expense.
Had I realized that, that would not have been in the contract, because that's not the verbal agreement that I had made.
Since that's a signed one, I think you gotta stick with that one, or he has to agree to amend his contract.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, I guess you guys are gonna need to get this ironed out, right?
Yes, we will, we'll have to, we'll discuss what we're gonna do from here, is that all right?
Yeah.
So if you want a table, is that?
Well, yeah, we weren't gonna make no motion on anything, it was more of a discussion.
Okay. Okay, and we'll discuss it tomorrow morning, you're gonna be in tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so next, we got approval of fundraising requests, uh, first, we got the Washington DC Club, they're requesting a tailgate supper and/or concession stand special.
I'll make a motion to approve the DC Club's fundraisers.
Second.
Motion by Pat, and a second by Angie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we got Science Department, uh, post-prom soup luncheon for, uh, on December seventh.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the soup luncheon.
Motion by Angie?
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, um, Ray is gonna talk a little bit about, uh, car tuck, tuck pointing, maintenance and repair.
I have a contract, I was running through, uh, documents, I brought it down with me, from, uh, my report then? Yeah, okay, car tuck pointing, I went through my desk, and I started pulling out drawers, and I found a flash drive, and the flash drive I put in my computer, and it was a, a bid from this company to, to do tuck pointing, which was approved by the board in April, so I called the company, they're gonna honor it, and next spring, they're gonna do the tuck pointing on the places that are needed in the elementary school, so I called, and that's ready to go. And again, the board approved it April eighth, I think, of nineteen, signed by, uh, Jack Gregor, the president, not signed by the school district, so I'll take care of that. It, the total cost is twelve thousand, and they said they do it for the same price, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And tuck pointing is important for the public that don't know, bricks are held in place by mortar, and over many years, the mortar breaks down, and that can allow, allow for water contamination, black mold, and all kinds of things, so I'm gonna recommend that that's taken care of.
Okay. Um, next, we move on to gym light, um, upgrade bids.
And I had that in my report also, we have, uh, I don't, this doesn't have to go to the board, but it's, uh, what the approximate cost, about three thousand five hundred dollars to replace the gym lights with LCD.
I got a bid, sir.
Yeah, Kelly's got.
Kelly's got.
We have multiple bids.
Okay. Do you wanna do this?
I will, sure.
Okay, so this is actually Tim's bid, but he's got rebates.
Right.
And so that makes it a net.
So, yeah, Tim's bid is one thousand nine forty-five?
Yes, well, the.
After rebates.
Yes, it's actually thirty-four hundred minus eighteen hundred and, or no, fourteen hundred.
Yep, fourteen hundred fifty-five for a total cost of one thousand nine forty-five. From Wheeler Electric, the price is forty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars.
But Wheeler doesn't list any rebates.
He doesn't list the rebates, but still, without rebates, his price is still eleven hundred dollars higher.
Tim, are the rebates like from the electric company, or from the light?
Both, multiple, just depends on what product you use.
Okay.
And, um, what they're certified as.
And the payback on this would be very high, probably pay for itself in one to one and a half years by a lower electrical rate for those lights in the gym.
Yeah, you'd be using half, half electricity.
Exactly, and your homes, I switched a ranch that I had into Mexico from conventional light bulbs to LED at that time, and I saved about thirty-five, forty dollars a month on my electric bill just in the house. So it'd be dramatically, probably ten times that here.
Um, how soon would you be wanting to get that done, or?
Thanksgiving.
Oh, you'd do it?
Thanksgiving or Christmas, whatever.
Thanksgiving. If it's approved, that's my plan.
Okay.
And I don't need a board of board approval on that because it's under five thousand dollars, but I wanted just to bring it up for information, board.
We might as well.
But if you want to approve that, that's fine.
I'd rather see it approved, thank you.
And of course, you'll abstain?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept TNT Electric's, uh, bid to upgrade the gym lights.
Motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Angie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carry. Took it back, so. No, sorry, you got it just. Okay, next, we got, um, Southeast Service Co-op, um, election of board ballots.
We receive this in the mail, um, there is one ballot for each board member. It needs to be received by Tuesday, December tenth, and I have an envelope here to send them back, so you can all go back to us in the office, we'll jump back.
No.
I was gonna say you, Pat.
No.
Well, I guess if you guys wanna vote, we might as well just do it tonight and, and give it back to Kelly, and he can send them off.
Okay.
But, uh, it don't look like there's, uh.
Not a whole lot of options other than write-in, you know, David.
Pat, you already made your pick.
Be my ex.
I think you might have tried it.
Yeah, you need to sign it.
Oh, that's right.
Unless you wanna write in somebody.
Where are you supposed to sign it?
School district candidate.
No, I think that's only.
Nope, that's a write-in.
No, that's a write-in, no, we don't gotta sign anything.
Sign it out.
No, we're good.
So you're a write-in now, Steve. Ran uncontested.
Okay, next, we got, um, bank authorization, so with the new personnel, um, we need to assign new people with the authority to, uh, do bank.
And remove all people.
So how should that motion be structured?
Do we need to do all three, or you two?
I spoke with the bank, I was down with the bank last Thursday, and they need, what they need from us is, um, to remove, we need to say that we're moving all prior people who are authorized, and then we need names of people who are authorized for each account. We currently have one, two, three, four, five, six accounts. And I, I spoke with both Mel and Region Five on these accounts, and eventually, hopefully by the end of the year, but I'm not gonna pronounce by any. And I, uh, I spoke with both Mel and Region Five on these accounts and eventually, hopefully by the end of the year, but I'm not gonna pronounce by the end of the year. These will be, I'll be combining most of these because they're not needed. Uh, the activity checking and activity investment accounts, uh, the state has recommended we do not use them. And that, that came down in June, I believe, but it's not effective until this coming school year. But we're not using them currently, so we may as well move them.
Mr. Chair, our accountants recommended we also not use them at my other districts, that we combine it to as few accounts as possible. Cause we had a finding on that last couple of months ago before I came here.
And my thought is on this, and I talked to Mel and she agreed that we should put, if we're combining these, put the money into the investment savings account so it's earning interest. And that's our main, where we hold most of our money anyway. So that's at one percent. And some of these accounts currently, one is at, a couple of them are at half percent. One's at one and one is at point zero five percent. So that's basically earning nothing. So, but until then, we're gonna need names of who are on these each account.
Have this, are the same people on all of them accounts now?
No.
They're not?
There's people that haven't been employed here for many years. Aaron is on one and I'm not sure that he should be on them. Um, other than that, nobody else that is currently employed is on any of these.
So we need to somehow make a motion to wipe the slate and start over. So I will make the motion that we remove all current people authorized on these accounts.
On all accounts.
On all accounts.
Okay, motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also gonna add before, sorry, um, that we need the minutes from the meeting tonight signed by both you and.
Steve.
Steve, okay. Okay, I'll start that over. Motion by Pat, second by Tim. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carry. Now we need a motion and we need to decide who will be assigned, but I'm assuming that we will assign Crystal, Kelly. Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. That's what I was gonna write in three months. And Teresa also. Teresa, four. District treasurer. Yes. And so, and they could just well be assigned to all the accounts. I say, that'd be my, my thought. So we call it cross-training so everybody can be involved in it. So I think that would be important that everyone has access to them. It's also important, while I don't anticipate any, uh, problems, I think it's very important that we remove the other people. Thank you. Okay, so I guess we'll be looking for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to give authorization to Teresa Frazier, Kelly Masters, Ray Arsenal, and who was the other?
Cynthia.
Cris.
Her Crystal.
Crystal. Um, to all of our existing bank accounts.
Motion by Tim?
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I won't abstain. Motion carry. Um, next we'll move on to, uh, Aaron, uh, with the principal report.
I mean it.
I was just my outside friend and outside guy.
You ready for your?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I asked Aaron to come in because he had, he missed the last meeting and I wanted him to review these things with the board because I attended the SMEC meetings. I found out how we had, uh, performed on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment compared to other, uh, schools in our area. And Mr. Hunger Hope will give that information to the board and public now.
Right. So last month, I gave you kind of a detail of where we rank consortium-wide, uh, math and reading, um, our ACT scores, um, enrollment, the tests we offered with the PSAT, ACT, MCAs and Fastbridge, um, introduce new staff, Alice Drill that we performed with the community, um, with EMT Law Enforcement and Fire. Um, and some of the staff development things we've been doing. So that was last month. Did anybody have any questions on those before I jump into the handouts I gave you? This week, I tried to make it kind of self-explanatory since I wasn't here, so. Um, moving into, um, this month, I, the, two of the papers I believe I gave you last week with the growth chart, um, and the consortium scores. But the one with, I apologize, um, hopefully you can follow, mine's colored, but you ones all the boxes on there. What that shows is, um, it's, it's, it's a good indication that the teachers can follow of, really, if you move diagonal, you're looking at the growth. Um, you can compare fourth grade to fourth grade, fifth grade to fifth grade, but it's different kids. Um, so what's more important is what you look at that diagonal with the growth from, as a class goes from grade to grade. Um, you start on top, um, our reading scores, um, if you look, I believe, um, a lot of growth in all of our areas. Um, the biggest drop was fifth grade to sixth grade, but really, um, when you hit ninety percent in, uh, fifth grade and you make that jump to middle school, um, we're gonna have a little bit of a dip, but we'll, still in the seventy percent, but we'll keep working on that. So reading scores were, were very high, uh, looked really good. Um, some good growth up there. Math is a little bit of growth, a little bit of, um, dropping down. We know math is our focus area. Um, we just got a new math curriculum a couple of years ago of updated, um, of the updated version of that. So we're working on that. We're working on putting standards and goals and targets. So we're doing a lot of work with this, especially in our PLCs. But kind of gives you an indication of where we've been, where we're going, what we need to work on. Um, the one line in between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, uh, before two thousand thirteen, it was, if you remember, it was AYP and all these different letters and things that, you know, yearly progress, but they changed that and now it went to the new version of the testing and redid everything. So you can kind of see how our scores dropped a little bit and we've been working our way back up to, um, some decent scores. So really, that's what we use that. Um, the teachers use this to kind of compare them. They can break it down. Teachers can have access to actual individuals. Um, so they can actually look at, um, individual kids instead of just the whole grade. But this is just a snapshot of the whole grade. So. Really, that's all I wanna touch on. We came to the end of the quarter, starting a new quarter. Um, I'll just come with more information every month with stuff. But I just wanted to make sure we got this out. And if you wanna look at information, I get everything off of the MDE website on the Minnesota Report Card. Um, you can, that's where you can look at other schools and things like that as well, so. Questions on anything?
Any questions for?
No.
Do you have anything else, Aaron, or is that?
No, that's all I got. I just wanted to get those out there. Like I said, I, I put a lot of, produced a lot of stuff at you last month, so.
I guess if nobody has any questions, we'll move on to, uh, superintendent report. Uh, regarding the test scores, I met a couple of times with SMEC and we have some of the highest scores, I believe, in the whole area in testing. And I mentioned that I feel a little bit like a duck out of water because my three previous districts, we were some of the lowest scoring just, uh, school districts in the area. And I was able to move them up. Here, I have a different problem. We have to work on math, but in other areas, we're already at a very high level and we'll try to improve that. Uh, first of all, thanks to you for letting me service your superintendent. We've already covered the carotuck pointing bid and I think everyone understands what that is. Number three, uh, we already talked about the LED gym lighting that we're gonna be taking care of over Thanksgiving. I thought it might be Christmas, but that's better yet. I, the comment on past, and I'm not gonna talk about it again after this, I reviewed the documents related to the background of the principal and coach reports prior to my arriving here. I've decided to move forward and, uh, that's the last I'll say about that for as long as I'm here, hopefully a long time period. Five, winter sports coaches have been interviewed, are up for board approval. You've already taken care of that. Timelines have made it necessary to proceed prior to the board meeting for approving coaches and sometimes those things happen. We also had some questions about who was gonna go fulfill, fulfilling those roles and I think I'm pleased with the boys and girls basketball coaches that we have in place. A health event occurred at our football banquet and Axel has a background on this. Luckily for us, about two months prior to that banquet, the staff, many staff members and myself were trained in the AED machine and, and CPR training. So when we had an event with David Cassidy, your brother, we were able to all take different roles. I can't give CPR because I have a little bit of COBT and I don't wanna pass out on the floor. So what I did was to help control what was going on, to check his medical history, to find out that it wasn't, uh, two other possibilities, epilepsy, as I mentioned before, or, uh, uh, diabetes, because you can have a shock and a fit there too, because I've experienced them. But then we, someone got the AED machine, we used it, and I think the report was, if anybody knows that, uh, had we not done that, he might not have survived more than another ten minutes. So I was very pleased that the staff were trained and I thanked them and I thanked the paramedics that responded and everybody involved. And, uh, I had been involved before. I was trained as a volunteer fireman and I, that was about the fourth time, I think, that I responded. I'm too old and I'm never gonna do that. I'm not gonna be a volunteer here because it took me about three days before I could sleep. Cause I kept thinking, what if we screwed up? But we didn't, exactly. Then, seven, uh, we ordered an automatic dispenser and the price of the dispenser is only about four hundred dollars. The chemicals for it, I think it runs a total of about seven hundred, but we have to renew those chemicals. And I had done this in several other schools. What happens is the water that you put into that boiler has lime and various other things in it, but it's more than that. The chemical reaction, I used to teach a little chemistry, between the iron and steel in there react to each other and they break down. So this system will measure and test the chemicals to see if it has a high pH or low pH acid level. It'll add the chemicals automatically and it'll prolong the life of the boiler, uh, pipes that run through the whole school and the pipes inside of the boiler. And I happened to do the exact same thing before you hired me at, at Butterfield. We put it in. And I had it in, I had thirty-five schools in New Mexico and we, we had it in almost all the schools there. So just to comment on that. Eight. I've checked on it. Nobody's got back to me yet, but I'm watching the, the schedule for sports that go on till, what, seven thirty, eight o'clock at night? Back in the old days, they told me you used to have a curtain that sep- that separated the courts. The track is still there, running across the courts. So there are companies that'll custom make curtains that can go, that can go back and forth and then have flaps that'll open and close where the bleachers are. So I'm looking into the cost of that if the board is interested in pursuing it because it would shorten the amount of time we spent in practices. Volleyball team could have run tournaments in different areas without whacking each other with the ball. Basketball could do the same thing. So I, I, I kind of took it on myself to approach bids for it, but I don't make the decision. The community and the board do. So if you're interested in that, that's something we're looking into for, probably for next summer. And it was there before. Biggest problem, the bleachers used to evidently be separated, so it could go back in that way. But they can custom make them now with the track there especially, because that's a big part of the cost. So that they can open up and then have flaps that'll go up when the bleachers are open or just everything closed when they go down, so people could walk through, so.
I think it was only, it all went to that one side on the, on the opposition side.
Sure.
The visitor side. It all went there.
That could, that could happen. Otherwise, it could go both ways.
Because the bleachers on the home side have always been full, so it just always all slid up into that space between the two sets.
And I've heard from both sports, volleyball and basketball, that they would like that. So that's something I'd like you to think about. And that's all that I have at this point. And the, the superintendent report I sent out, I think, yesterday, I, reason I usually do this today at the meeting, I thought, well, heck, I left these things out. So I updated it for the board and for you for this meeting. That's all I have, Chair. Any questions for Ray? Uh, I guess next we'll move on to, uh, um, board report if any board member would like to mention or say anything.
I was just wondering how David's doing.
Uh, David's doing very well. Um, uh, I guess what they determined, he's got a valve in the center of his heart that fluttered and his heart stopped. And to remedy it, they installed a defail in his arm and run wires to his heart. So if it happens again, he'll get shocked. I, I, I could expand it a little bit too. When it happened, we weren't sure what it was, but the, when we attached the AED machine, it administered the shock and he came right back within like ten seconds. So I'm not surprised that was the diagnosis in truth. So there was no, uh, long-term ill effects. It means a hundred percent normal. So.
Yeah.
It's just very, very fortunate it happened where it happened.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It was very fortunate. There was a number of people and Dan was there and there was a number of people that knew what to do and, and, uh, they didn't panic. They just did their thing and ran and got the defail and.
Yeah, they all did an amazing job.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chair, I talked to the superintendent, uh, Steve Thomas that took over my position in Butterfield. I told him the story. We had one by the gym, so he was ordering a couple more, one for the high school, mid-school area and one for the elementary school.
How many do we have?
We have three, I believe.
One in the pool, one in the elementary and one right there.
He only had one. And the way it was set up there, somebody might die before they could get the machine and hook them up. So they're adding it there. And I think that many other districts, if you, uh, report on it, might do the same thing, Axel. So.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
I have one. We haven't had our monthly SMEC board meeting yet, but, um, the building is coming along as planned. The timeline is still the same. They are still on budget, have not gone over. And then, um, we also, Dan let us know that they are working to hire subs across the consortium for coverage in the Level Three programs. So hopefully, they will be able to have subs ready and available if needed versus finding each district their own sub.
Can I piggyback on it, Mr. Chair? I had a meeting there this morning at nine o'clock. And, uh, they're planning on moving in on the seventeenth and they're ready to go. And we had a few questions about exterior cameras and other things and I had been involved in remodeling or building seven schools. So I had some suggestions for him on how to handle some of those things, so.
Okay.
That was today. That's why I was late arriving here. Is that it for that Teresa?
Yeah, that's all I have for SMEC.
One thing I would like to add is, um, I got her email from Jean Papi and she's gonna come to our December seventeenth meeting. So if anybody would like to come and say hi to, to Jean, uh, she'll be here for a short while prior to the meeting. So, um, so I don't know. Did you and Dan talk to her or? I haven't yet, but, uh, we're going to.
Yep.
I think it's very positive to have her here and I'm gonna ask her for more money. Because it's not gonna work with them giving us two percent and two percent. And to keep our staff here, it's costing us three percent and three percent. And I don't think you wanna go to an excess levy or mill rate. So hell, and don't give a five hundred million dollar tax break. Give us some money. But I'll, I'll be much more polite than that. So, um, if the board could take note, um, I would recommend you try and be here a half hour ahead. Cause Jean will come and wants to meet and talk with whoever is here by the time. So if anybody would like to come and say hi, just come a little early. Cause I don't think she's gonna stick around for the whole meeting. She's gonna come and, and say her thing and, so. And I don't know, I don't know why she picked me. I can't answer that, so go ahead.
Would it be a good idea to have some teachers here to give real-life stories of what we need this money for?
Yeah.
Be careful. We don't wanna offend her though too, so we'll have to be very careful how we do that. Cause I, 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 I'm on your side. Yeah, I'm, no, I'm a politician too. And I don't wanna offend them.
But just, it's.
You know, you guys, you can, the staff, they can, we got them on.
Right.
You could run some ideas by Ray. You guys, you know, that, I don't see nothing wrong with, you know.
Jill, she'll be here during the day as well. She's gonna meet with Ray and I and get a tour of our building and be in some classrooms and maybe if we want to have a question and answer time, if it works on our schedule, we could, we could look at that too. Just remind me, we can talk about that next week.
What time is she actually coming then?
Um, she gave me a three-hour window, I believe. It's, I think it was like eight thirty to eleven thirty, I believe, in the morning.
What's she gonna do to the rest of the day then?
Well, I don't know if she's going to other school or what she's doing.
There's a lot to do in town. She could probably.
Her, I didn't talk to her. I talked to whoever sets her stuff up. So they were setting up, uh, meeting times and.
Actually, if the board is interested in this in the future, we used to, when I was in New Mexico, we'd have a, we'd host an afternoon where we'd invite our state senators and representatives in. And, uh, they'd ask us questions. We'd give them our, our. And they ask us questions, we give them our, our needs for the school district. We were trying to do it in Butterfield, but we were too small, so maybe we could get it here and maybe we could work with a couple of other districts and have her come in and meet Southland and meet whoever else in the area with us. And then teachers could tell them how, how much money you spend on your own supplies and other things then too and kinda just cry a little bit, but politely.
Girls start basketball, they have a first game Friday night, I think they've been working really hard, so I think they'd appreciate the support.
Wow, that's.
Maple.
Quaker.
When the DC fundraiser is too, if anyone wants to cook Friday night.
Right, yeah, I think, yeah, what, pork sandwiches?
Pork sandwich, baked chips for three bucks.
Look up on the Facebook page, I'm already waiting for you to go through. Mr. Chair, also I've attended boys, a couple of boys in girls' basketball practices too, I just wanna see what they're doing, because I used to be a varsity B squad, boys and girls' basketball coach, assistant football coach and state league football, basketball, track official. So I kinda watch what's going on and I like what I see. And volleyball official, I left out too.
I've noticed the same thing, I've been into a couple of practices too and it's positive attitudes all around, so. Yes, they are.
I spent about forty-five minutes there tonight before the meeting.
Good.
It's also nice to see something on the Facebook page daily.
Yeah, yes, good job.
Very nice.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
So what did you say, if you post more than a few times, they, they like kinda say?
If you post, what you wanna try to say is that two times per day, if you post more than that, you get flagged and Facebook's algorithm is possible junk. So you get pushed down people's feeds and you get moved out of what they call their top twenty.
Sure.
So if I can stay within two posts per day and keep them a minimum of like four to six hours apart, we always stay at the top twenty people's feeds. So and we don't have to post or boost it then, so it doesn't cost us any money to boost into people's top twenty in their feed, so. Just their algorithm really pays attention to when, where, how, the words you use, I mean, it's, it's everything, so. But as long as it's no more than two times a day and not too close together, we stay.
I see, you usually post pretty early in the morning and then later toward the school day or, yep.
Yep.
And I should add one thing too, because I haven't done it yet, I look at the website and there's just my name. I gave Crystal a short biography that I'd like to post on there and a picture of myself too, so that should be ready to go.
They've been taking pictures for the last couple of weeks, so stuff to change the pictures and.
So that's ready too to be posted.
Yeah, okay.
And that video is not ready. Remember the video, months ago? None of the schools have it and they're, the gentleman is supposed to get back to us yet.
Forgot about that.
I think he did too.
That's something I did too with a decent camera, I mean, free editing. They'll get back to us, we need to do what it owes.
Well, does anybody else got anything to add, any other comments? Not against me looking to it, Chair.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Motion by Tim?
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven forty-four.